Good afternoon. I would like to welcome everyone to the March 23, 2023 work session of the Henrico County School Board. And the first item on our agenda this afternoon is the approval of the agenda. Board members, may I please have a motion?
I move that the school board approve the agenda for today's meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Atkins. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. The agenda is approved. The next item on our agenda for this afternoon is a closed session meeting. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I move that the school board go into closed session for the discussion of matters covered under items A1 of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended, pertaining to the assignment, appointment, performance, salaries, disciplining, and release of contract for specific school board employees.
Thank you so much, Reverend Cooper. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ogborne. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? The ayes have it. We will now go into closed session. We will reconvene this work session at the conclusion of our closed meeting. Thank you. Welcome back to our work session. The next item is the certification of our closed session. Board members, may I have a motion to certify closed session?
I move that the school board certify by recorded vote that, to the best of each school board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Ogborne. Board members, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Closed session has been certified. The next item on our agenda is items from the superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Consella. Members of the board, good afternoon. For the first item, I have another opportunity to review proposed revisions to policy P4-08-008, annual leave. As shared previously, these revisions are being made to align with the county of Henrico's annual leave policy to remove obsolete references to accrual for employees paid biweekly, as well as to remove any obsolete references to practices that are no longer in place. And we'll be seeking your approval of the policy with the recommended revisions at our monthly meeting this evening.
Board members, do you have any questions or comments? Let's start with Ms. Atkins.
Thank you. I did have a question around this policy and wanted to know if we are exploring looking at donating annual leave time to other employees.
Good afternoon. Yes, ma'am, actually, we are. We have several draft leave policies being worked on currently, and that is a policy that we are working on.
Fantastic. And so that'll be a completely separate policy? Or will this particular policy be amended to allow the opportunity for staff to donate their time to other employees?
That will be a separate policy.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
You may want to stay there, just in case. Ms. Bolden, thank you so much. Ms. Ogborne, do you have any questions?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Reverend Cooper? No questions. Ms. Bolden, just so I can be clear, so we have different leave policies for different types of leave.
That is correct.
Right? So, for example, the sick leave, like what she's talking about would be what policy?
Well...
Can you move a little closer?
Yes, ma'am, I'm very sorry. Mrs. Atkins was asking about a leave donation policy. So that would be a standalone policy. We have separate policies for annual leave, sick leave, and personal leave.
Okay. And the policies are consistent, so it's not just like the school board can change them on the school's side. Am I right about that? That we have to be in line with what the government's side does as well, right?
Yes, ma'am. Leave is a benefit, so we do endeavor to be consistent with our government partners.
Okay. Thank you so much. I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Bolden, and we will again seek your approval on those revisions this evening. Next, I'm very pleased that we will have our annual update from the Career and Technical Education Business Advisory Committee. We're always so grateful for our advisory committees and all of the time, effort, and energy they give in advising the board and the work in a number of our areas. So I will turn it over to them for their update.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, colleagues, and guests. Today, we are fortunate enough to have a dedicated business community that continues to support our CTE students and programs in Henrico. During a recent state audit, it was highlighted by the Department of Education that the Business CTE Advisory Council was one of the most active they had seen. I'm joined tonight by our Chair, Mr. Tyson Bates, our Vice Chair, Mr. Charles Tilly, and our Secretary, Mr. Chris Smith. As I said, it's an honor to be here to talk about the efforts, the contributions, and the passion of these members of this committee. We will focus tonight on the work that has been done during the 2223 school year. The committee is truly dedicated to helping make sure our students have the best CTE opportunities possible. They believe in the program, they believe in our school system, but most importantly, they believe in our students. The mission of the Business Advisory Committee is to truly make sure our students graduate life-ready, which is one of the objectives in the strategic plan for Henrico. In the world of CTE, we are fortunate that the BAC committee continues to guide us. Our committee members continue to seek out opportunities for our teachers and our students to continue to grow. For members of the committee, this is more than an opportunity to serve. It's an opportunity to build the community because each member of the community, they will see the direct correlation to the quality of our CTE programs, which translates to the economic success of the community. The main goal of this committee is not to focus on what we have done, but to focus on continuous improvement. While it's important to highlight the successes of CTE, it's more important for the committee to push us to improve. In the fall of 2020, the BAC committee came up with a three-pronged approach to ensure that our students were getting the opportunities and the instruction needed to be ready to graduate enrolled, enlisted, and/or employed. This three-pronged approach aligns itself directly with the strategic plan, and the focus is continuously revisited at each meeting. We have continued this three-pronged approach to ensure that the work of the committee is focused and aligned with the missions and goals of Henrico County Public Schools. I will now turn the presentation over to Mr. Tyson Bates, Chair of the Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee.
Thank you very much for having us this evening. I would first like to introduce the officers of the CTE Business Committee. First, we have Charles Tilly with Quinn Evans Architects, Chris Smith with Bill Zallyford, and then myself, Tyson Bates, with CBT Contracting. So we have a very active committee. Everybody enjoys coming. I know I haven't marked for the next year, every Tuesday, second Tuesday of every month, and we really enjoy coming out. Our board has a goal to support teacher-students in all 17 of our programs, career clusters that CTE supports. While the goal of our committee is to focus on CTE, the committee itself has to be very broad because the scope of the CTE touches all areas of the workforce and adult education. All of the members, because of their intrinsic value perceived through engagement, the reward is definitely prominent in involvement. Our mission drives what we do and how we do it. The mission is essential to the success of the students in the CTE, but also the success of the businesses and the community. In a time that job-ready skills are so important, it's imperative that we are actively engaged in helping ensure the success of the program. Henrico is known as a leader in the CTE, not only in the state, but the country, and the committee is excited to be a part of that success. Utilizing a three-pronged approach, we are able to divide our committee into subcommittees to maximize the use of our time, ensuring members feel that they are contributing and successful in the mission. The three subcommittees are focused promoting CTE, evaluating the effectiveness of the current programs, how to meet the current demands. With the focus on work-based learning opportunities, more students are able to graduate high school with a better understanding of what is next. With the goal of having every student graduated, enrolled, or enlisted, employed... Sorry, I'll start that over. The goal is to have every student enrolled, enlisted, and/or employed. It is more important than ever to help students have an opportunity to experience the future, can be, and graduate life-ready experiences. This ensures both the hard skills needed for the world of work, as well as the soft skills needed for the success in life. With the expansion of the A-Center CTE, we will be able to grow and expand program offerings. We are excited to help guide the growth of providing needed information and assistance for in-demand career opportunities today and in the future. CTE has always been flexible to growth and change in today's workplace, and not only giving essential skills, but survival skills for companies. The three signature events that Henrico CTE program participates or puts on: the Life Ready Expo, the Career Rodeo, and the Letter of Intent Signing Day. They all continue to set the bar around the country. We are excited that the General Assembly has made the Fourth Wednesday in April the official Letter of Intent Signing Day for the state of Virginia. It was acknowledged that this effort started in Henrico County has spread not just in Virginia, but across the entire country. I will now turn the presentation back over to Mac.
Okay. I think it's Charles or Chris.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right. Each meeting has a program highlighting what is happening in various CTE classes. We have an opportunity to learn what we can improve, what is needed, what opportunities are there for the students, and how can the committee support those activities. The goal is not to dictate what's happening in the programs, but to provide the opportunity to support the needs of Henrico schools when it comes to CTE meetings and the needs of the business and industry as well, and meeting the mission goals of Henrico County schools. So as we begin to look at next year, there's two considerations that the CTE Advisory Committee believe will be key to continue the success of the programs and the growth. And one of those, we believe there will need to be additional staff, not only to meet the needs of the current students and the current curriculums, but also the new programs as space becomes available. We certainly want to make sure that every student that would like to have knowledge in a certain area, that they have that opportunity to pursue that. And then as space becomes available for new programs, it's important that we adequately staff those new programs as well. Number two, we are certainly appreciative of the support from Henrico County schools to ensure that the programs have the needed resources and the equipment to teach the competencies that are needed by the business and the industry. We're so appreciative of the continued support of the CTE programs, but we know that we must stay on the cutting edge. For example, I will tell you that in the Ford world, I'm a Ford dealer, in the Ford world, corporate Ford has a real emphasis on life-ready students. And there are goals now for Ford dealers to employ students and recent graduates, specifically talking about technicians. And Ford makes it lucrative if you do and not lucrative if you don't. What I want to tell you is that because of your commitment to this program and your partnerships, because we work with different school districts, Henrico County students have an edge when they're going out to compete for these jobs. So we definitely thank you for the support of that. Our role in this is also to help support by working with other business and industry partners to help provide access to new and emerging technologies. Again, for example, word on the street, electric vehicles are close. So we want to make sure that our students have access to learn the basics about electric vehicles, and that's what we hope to do as a committee, things like that, that the technology is available to your students. So now, I think I'm just going to turn it over.
Tyson comes back.
Tyson. As I mentioned earlier, our committee is always excited when we come around. We're not just there to listen. We truly feel like we have a purpose and that we have a mission. Beyond the subcommittee work, we have the opportunity to learn from staff on how to get involved with the students and opportunities offered, whether it is to prepare for events like the Career Rodeo that was in February, or the Letter of Intent Signing Day. The CTE staff is always ready to engage and participate.
On behalf of the Business Advisory Council, we would like to thank the school board for making the future so bright for CTE students in Henrico. The vision to meet the needs of students interested in CTE would not be possible without your continued support and that of the county. Having a learning environment that is state-of-the-art is more than just staffing or equipment. It's about a facility that truly lends itself to learning in an environment that is more than just a classroom. We are excited that Henrico County will be opening three extensive renovations to the Highland Springs A-Center, the Hermitage A-Center, and the A-Center at Virginia Randolph very soon. Many of the efforts to revision CTE and the role it has in the well-rounded educational program are starting to pay dividends to the business community, as well as the community at large. It's evident to us that Henrico County CTE is a well-known leader, but to continue being at the forefront, it takes continued support of the school board and the administration. As a part of the federal CTE requirement... Oh, pardon me here. Part of the federal CTE requirement, staff must develop a plan each year to help guide the work and ensure not only that we're meeting the needs of our students, but also recognizing and addressing any weaknesses identified. Here, we're listing some of the highlights of the local plan that we'll be focusing on this year as we're trying to help Mac and his team expand healthcare programming, technology-related programs, and construction-related program offerings. This local plan is established to help us focus our work as a Business Advisory Council and to help us serve as a roadmap for the ACE leadership staff. We continue utilizing that three-pronged approach that Tyson was talking about in our meeting structure so that we are ensuring that we're providing meaningful input and
So as I mentioned, Henrico strives to be the leader in CTE efforts. There's several programs that you may not know about that we also participate in. That's the Adult Education Program over at Regency Mall, where we help... It's more focused on adults than the children. And then we also have the Home Building Project, in which the students actually that are in the trade schools get to go out and they build a home for someone, and we get to go out there and help them participate in it. We all get to walk the projects and really enjoy it. But last but not least, we could do none of this without Mac Baden, our fearless leader. So he's always engaged and ready to participate, ready to answer questions, and ready to talk to anybody. So we really appreciate all he does. Thank you.
Thank y'all. We'll be happy to answer any questions about the work the committee does and the support that it brings for our programs, but I will say this on the record, this is the most dedicated group of employers I have ever met, and they truly do care about our kids. And that is, to me, you can't put a price tag on that, so.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Baden, Mr. Tilly, Mr. Bates, and Mr. Smith for presenting to us today. I'm certain board members are very excited to thank you for your volunteerism and support and helping to ensure that our students and our business community were all life-ready, right? And I think I'm going to start with Mrs. Shea, who is our Business Advisory Committee Board Representative. Mrs. Shea.
Thank you, Ms. Consella. It's great to see familiar and friendly faces at the podium today. Thank you for all the work that all of y'all do. It's our partnership with our businesses that really give teeth to all the ideas and implementation that Mac has. Without partnerships with our businesses, it's another class. But with partnerships with our businesses, it's really real-world and launching our students into their careers. So I'll keep it short because I get to see y'all every month, but thank you for being here. Thank you for sharing the tremendous work. We're so excited about Regency and about the new center's opening.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Shea. Mrs. Ogborne?
Sure. Thank you all. I'll echo what the others have said, but for your service to the community, to this committee, but also that means to our programs, to our students, we can't do what we do without your help and with, as Marcy said, that partnership. But I noticed as I was looking at this presentation, but also to all of your words, the word "opportunity" comes over and over and over again, which is obviously your focus. And I look at it as sort of a two-pronged... It's not only an opportunity for our students, but for our business partners to benefit from these kids coming out ready. And I would hope that you look at it as a cost savings to you to have to not train them as much as you would and to have a workforce that is ready to go from day one and need less support hopefully over the years. But we can't know what we need until we work with y'all to get that information. So it really is a win-win on both sides, and I'm so appreciative of that. But I mean, we had a HEF board meeting at the adult space the other night, and the folks there got a tour, and they were so impressed with that part of what's going on. They learned more from Mac about what's going on. And after Mac and the group left to go to another thing, they were double duty that night. But anyway, one of the members of the HEF board asked how our board and how the staff feels about the A-Center programs growing so much and that partnership mentality. And, you know, I just don't think any of us could be more excited about what's coming for our kids. That's the amazing thing, is that we used to, as Mrs. Consella will say, anytime you give her the opportunity, we were turning away 1,000 kids. We're not going to have to do that anymore, and it's with your leadership that that's happening. So thank you all very much, and I will pass it on.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ogborne. And you're right, not much makes me happier than knowing that we're going to be meeting the needs of students that we were not previously meeting. So with that said, Ms. Atkins, do you have any questions or comments?
I do. Mr. Bates, Mr. Tilly, and Mr. Smith, I want to thank you for your leadership and for being an example. I know that there's a whole group that meets to talk about the future. You know, we're using our presence and looking back at our past to help guide us for where we want to be. And it takes strong leadership to do that in your separate entities and agencies, and especially on the committee. And thank you for taking the time to be here to express that. That's equally important, to share the good news, and it's equally important to bring solutions to challenges and not just bring the challenges. And I'm so grateful with your leadership that that is happening, and there are no more words that I can express about Mr. Baden himself, except that his work speaks for him and his relationships help. And so that's with you, and that's a trusting relationship that we can clearly see here. And so ever so grateful for you being you, you being a leader, and being an example. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Atkins. And now Reverend Cooper, who is also... I mean, our entire board is involved with our CTE program, but Reverend Cooper also sits on the Henrico County Vocational Technical Education Committee too. So what questions and comments do you have?
I'm not going to reconvey the pleasantries of my colleagues, but I do concur with their comments. But Mac, if you could do me one favor, can you kind of share with us the process that occurred for the legislature to denote that as a statewide day? Because, I mean, I think that's phenomenal. We really should have clapped because, again, it shows that we are...
We can still clap.
I mean, because I think, again, we do want to be leaders in our industry, and that is definitely something that shows our commitment to the community and our students, how important vocational education is. So can you just kind of give us the backstory on that?
Well, as you know, in 2018, we started with an idea here in Henrico to recognize our students that were going into the workforce. When you think about our young people, I had the opportunity to address the legislation, in which that was an interesting thing, that, you know, this is a piece of cake when you stand up there for that two minutes and the timer's going off. But it was really powerful because, you know, like I share with them, when you see a young person who, we know we need them in the workforce, and they would say when they were graduating, "I'm just going to go to work," and they would hang their head like they had done something wrong and let us down. That was air cue to say, "We need to do something to help change that mindset." That's where the growth of the Signing Day came from. The way it ended up with legislation is actually interesting. One of our legislators was one of my former students, and we were talking one day, and he was talking about his electronics teacher years ago who taught him stuff that when he went into the military, he got out of all these classes because he knew all this electronics. And I looked at him and said, "John, who was your electronics teacher?" And he goes, "Some guy by the name of Mac Baden." And I go... So I looked a little different, but he was the driver behind that because he called on to the value that this is something that really everybody needs to do. And when it was presented to the legislation at the end, it did pass 100% flying colors, and the comments basically were, "How could we not support our students when they are our future?" So I thought that was a powerful statement at the end of the conversation.
And thank you for sharing that story. And again, congratulations. Thank you all for your service. Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Reverend Cooper. I have a question, and I don't know which one of you wants to answer it, but anyone, just feel free to jump forward. When you talk about how we can support you or support our students, right, and we're talking about staff, can you elaborate on not just staff to expand? Because, okay, I've attended the meeting, so I'm just going to be clear. I've attended the meeting, so I just want to hear from you exactly what our struggles are with finding staff for the CTE program, like our current programming, as well as our expansion.
So I think some of it is just getting the message out to our business partners. I work in construction. Every day I hear about how the companies are willing to pay for training programs and aides. And so I think getting some of the staff, as we grow and almost a business development, our network, more companies can try and help support. But right now, we need participation with the Career Rodeo. Signing Day needs volunteers. And then we also have open spots on our committee itself. Not sure if I answered your question.
I think maybe more members even want to speak. Do you have something you want to say?
I just want to add that, you know, it's hard to find teachers to start with, and then it's even doubly hard to find a teacher that's qualified to teach some trade or IT or those kind of things. And so looking for policy solutions that... And I don't know any of these kind of legal details, but looking for things that can kind of work with the system that we have and try to bring people to the classroom who might not be your typical teacher or somebody that's been lifelong teacher. Some way, that's got to be, you know, brought into the mix. And that's not something that the Business Advisory knows that much about, but just something that, you know, working to build the pipeline of teachers, I think, is probably...
Do we... Mr. Baden, can you refresh my memory? Do we have career ladder for CTE?
Yes, we do.
Do you think that's going to help? I mean, just to...
Well, you know, I think we've got to be creative with our approach to addressing the needs because in today's marketplace, when, you know, the skill set that our students have is highly demanded, which means that the people that have this skill set are also in high demand. Well, I will say that the, you know, air pay structure is there, and it works great for a lot of different reasons. I can tell you, there were times when a lot of school divisions were cutting teachers' pay, and because of our pay structure, we were able to maintain. At this point in time, I think it's probably a much bigger level than Henrico and Henrico Schools and Henrico County, more of a state-driven function. We know these are high-demand areas. What can the state do or the federal government do to supplement these incomes? In other words, whether it's a tax break or maybe, you know, some kind of bonus that this can come from that level, then it can be, in my personal opinion, it could fluctuate base. Yes, today, we need auto mechanics. Tomorrow, we might need, you know, English teachers. It's hard to say. It's hard to say. But if you, once you adjust a pay scale, you kind of live there. But in the world of some of these trades, it's going to go up and down. But I think what we've got to do now is try to figure out how to get those people in the classroom, which also means we've got to also capitalize on the advantages of teaching. And, you know, I don't think, when you look at the accomplishments that we've accomplished and go out to Regency and see our teachers working with their students, they would not go back to what they were doing because they love what they're doing. Yes, they still have to make the payments at the end of the month, but the, you know, the county has been, the 8.2% has been great. I mean, everybody's excited, you know. So, there's a lot of things. But I think what really has to happen is much bigger as a society, we've got to start to value some of these pieces and make it rewarding for a teacher with the skill set to come into the classroom and deliver.
Okay. So, some of what you said, since we've done great things with our proposed budget, 8.2%, so I'm hearing legislative advocacy. And that would be, what, a division level from school board members as well as you, Dr. Cashwell?
And I would note that all through this session, that advocacy did occur. And certainly, the board's legislative priorities really teed us up to be able to get out and talk about, again, some of the, you know, changes we'd like to see to provide more flexibility when it comes to getting folks into the classroom on a non-traditional track, whether it's, you know, in the CTE arena or any other arena for that matter. We know we have a number of qualified candidates who may not be licensed teachers. So, looking at provisionally licensed pathways and those sorts of things, compensation to be able to, for divisions to offset that cost for individuals. Our HR team was all over that, and I know our voices were heard. And we saw some micro-change there, but I know this is a state-level priority that's been raised a number of times. So, continuing to look for creative solutions there.
Thank you so much, Dr. Cashwell. I know you guys will take that back to the Business Advisory Committee, that response as well as, "We hear you and we will support you any way we can." Thank you so much for your presentation and for all the work you do. Really, we appreciate you.
Thank you so much. Very grateful. All right. So, we've just heard from our Advisory Committee. And the next and final item I have is an opportunity for a first review of our education fee and tuition schedule for the next school year, '23, '24. As a reminder, we review this annually. You'll recall that we've worked over the past years as an administration and board to make sure that we're eliminating student fees where possible. And as we're creating our budgets, we're keeping that in mind. So, you'll see some reductions, some significant reductions in fees here noted, particularly the elimination of dual enrollment fees for all dual enrollment courses. And so, we provided you the documents, the red line for your review. We'd be seeking your approval at our April 20 meeting and would be open to any questions or comments you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Let's start with Reverend Cooper.
I don't have any questions at this time, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Ms. Atkins.
No questions at this time.
Okay. Ms. Ogbonn.
I do have a quick one. And basically, when I'm looking at the mandatory fee schedule, we're eliminating a lot of the middle school and high school business class fees, things like that. Are those just being rolled over into our budget to cover those classes?
Yes, ma'am. So, Budget Staff, really, we looked at the revenue that's typically generated by a lot of these fees, especially the smaller dollar fees, and also at the dual enrollment. So, we have basically increased the secondary education centralized budget to accommodate, for example, the purchase of physical education uniforms, but also to basically replace the revenue loss. And hopefully, this will also provide a lot more equity and opportunity for students to participate in these programs.
Well, when I look at the number of sheer number of fees that we are eliminating, I am thrilled by that. It was one of the things I remember talking with Dr., and we've talked about this so many times, but when Dr. Cashwell first came with us five years ago, was one of the things that we talked about as a goal to eliminating as many fees as possible. Because back in the olden days, when my kids were in school, it was not unusual to write a $300 check at fee night. And because you have, especially when they were seniors and you have, you know, graduation fees and cap, you know, all that stuff. And just doing this for our families and taking this burden, especially when they have more than one child, is incredible. So, I am so glad that this continues to be a priority, to eliminate as many of these fees for our families as we possibly can. So, the more red lines, the better. I think it's awesome. So, I'm appreciative, especially this dual enrollment. That is opening the doors for more opportunities for our kids to participate. So, at $50 a pop, you know, the three and $5 ones are not, but it mounts up. And so, I am thrilled to see that. And others are reductions as opposed to complete elimination. So, to the Budget Team, thank you so much for all the work to get this down as far as we have, and we'll keep working on it. So, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ogbonn. Mrs. Shea.
Thank you. I think Ms. Ogbonn already asked my question, but which was, you know, as a science teacher, I'm very cognizant of how that old $5 science fee used to really fund a lot of our lab equipment and stuff. So, just making sure that we're ready to push in from the budget side to make sure our teachers still have the same amount of resources to spend in their classroom for these hands-on experiences across all parts of the county.
Everywhere.
Yes, ma'am. The intent is to replace what was coming from the students and parents with more centralized funding in our budget.
Great. And then I just also want to share my excitement that we will continue to waive the non-resident student per capita tuition for our employees who are, have the option to bring their children with them to Henrico. I think that's so important. I think, you know, our employees are what make Henrico great and what make Henrico what it is. And so, it's the right thing to do to let their families reap the benefits of all the investments that they've made. So, I'm glad to see that we're continuing with the wave of the $6,000. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Shea. If I may just highlight that I agree with the elimination of dual enrollment fees. I think that's huge for us, as is the recruit-retain-reward item. Mrs. Shea just referenced about our waiving the tuition for non-Henrico resident employees. But that is done on a year-by-year basis, correct? Mr. Weck, I just want to highlight that. That is currently, that's done on an annual basis, right?
Yes, this is the second one-year change in the fee schedule that would allow for that waiver.
And we are excited that we're able to offer this for yet another year. Really, I'm just going to highlight covering the cost increase for student PSAT testing because for all of our ninth and 10th graders, I mean, that's just huge. I mean, I had two kids take it this year, and it was just so nice to have it waived for us. And I'm sure all of our families across Henrico Schools appreciate that. So, just thank you, Dr. Cashwell. I know your equity audit when you came to Henrico Schools back in 2018 highlighted a lot of things, and I think you've just made so much progress in terms of eliminating so many fees and barriers for our family.
If I may, I think the cumulative effect of the changes implemented under Dr. Cashwell's leadership is about $1.5 million. If you go back to adding up the laptop, the science and PE fees, information access, and all the fees before you today, the cumulative effect for our families has been leaving a great burden.
Wow. Thank you for highlighting that for us. We had never heard a number before. We just knew that they kept, the number kept growing. So, thank you for highlighting that, Mr. Weck. And that's all the questions we have.
Thank you.
All right. And that concludes items from me.
Okay. The next item on our agenda this afternoon is unfinished business. Board members, do we have any unfinished business? No. Okay. So, the next item would be new business. And under new business, I would just like to highlight, yesterday, we met with our Board of Supervisors counterparts as well as the county manager for our annual budget legislative review. And we just continue to value the extraordinary collaboration, and we appreciate their support so much in what we try to do on our side for our employees and, of course, for our students. And then I'm just going to ask board members if they would like to say anything in regard to our work yesterday with the Board of Supervisors and the manager. Board members, do you have any comments? Reverend Cooper? Ms. Ogbonn?
I'll just express some appreciation. They asked some really good, appropriate questions, pertinent questions, especially when Mr. Brandon asked about safety audits and what was going on there. And I think we all came away appreciative of the financial relationship, but the good working relationship we have with the Board of Supervisors. And we're just appreciative of that continuing good relationship. Thank you. I think Mrs. Shea is...
Mrs. Shea, do you have any questions or comments? Or I guess comments?
Yeah. As a follow-up to the ending discussion of our time meeting, I just want to express our gratitude for the Board of Supervisors for providing the lion's share of the county funds to the school board and the school division and their continued investment there and how much we appreciate it, as well as their partnership in able to allow our employees an 8.2% raise.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Shea. Mrs. Atkins?
And it really was an opportunity, and I would say a continued opportunity, to delve a bit further beyond just the data. It was a healthy discussion on, I would say, more sustainability, truly understanding financial truth, and that large share of money that's allocated towards education. And it was helpful to receive input into improvement as well and aligning that with PIPA, people, data, and processes. I took away, and I think our entire board felt wonderful walking away knowing how much support that we received from our Board of Supervisors and how our school board supports the Board of Supervisors as well. It was reciprocal. And I think that having that type of trusting relationship is important, again, to be an example for all of our communities, to watch these two entities intertwine for the betterment of children, families, and school communities. And it was a, I at least walked away with an even greater appreciation for relationship because during these times, we certainly need to be aligned, and we need to be great examples of how to move a district forward. And that is what happened on yesterday and what will continue to happen, I believe. Thank you, Mrs. Kinsella.
Thank you so much, Ms. Atkins. Reverend Cooper?
I'd just, again, concur with my colleagues. I think we made it abundantly clear how appreciative we are for the percentage of the county budget that is provided to us. And I also feel that we're good stewards of the money that they provide us. I think that we're very strategic in our allocation and designation of the funds in that we spend the most of our money on instruction as was presented to the board on yesterday. So, again, I thank Dr. Cashwell, Mr. Weck, and the entire staff as far as the prioritization we put, the intentionality we put, and always trying to ensure that our students and staff know how much we care for them. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Reverend Cooper. And then the next item of new business I'd like to bring forward is to ask Dr. Cashwell if she could provide some remarks to the board about the Youth Summit that was held this past Saturday, March 18th, the Teen Summit RVA. Dr. Cashwell?
Oh, thanks, Chair Kinsella. Happy to do that. I know board members heard me mention, as we began our work, general government team and Henrico Schools team really tackling this issue around youth crime and violence in our community and putting heads together. One of the things that surfaced was the need to get students' voice at the table. And while, you know, there were a lot of well-meaning adults, myself included, brainstorming ways to tackle this problem and provide support, we recognized that we really needed to hear from our young people and have a deep understanding of the issues they're facing and lift their voices. So, I'm so thrilled. Tremendous work, teams led by Monica Callahan-Smith, a number of our team members, Adrian Cole-Johnson, Holly Coy, Ingrid Grant, just so many people involved in making sure that we planned an event that could go regional. And so, a number of other localities participated. Students from Chesterfield Schools, Richmond City Public Schools came together for an incredible event. Their voices were used to create the day, what they would hear about, what they would be able to weigh in on. And they were able to have their voices heard on a number of topics that mattered to them, including mental health. Again, these were issues they raised. This was on a Saturday at the Richmond Convention Center. We're looking forward to seeing all of the data collected, if you will, the voices, the input from the students, and using that to guide our work. And the feedback from students was tremendous. They look forward to another event like this. They want to grow it. I think there's talk about getting students involved and planning the event. So, I think this is something we'll see grow in years to come. So, a big thanks to all of our staff who helped put that together. I know a number of board members were able to stop by and help out, volunteer in some capacity at the event. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Dr. Cashwell, for giving us an update on that. There's nothing more important, really, than student voice. I mean, stakeholder voice from all of our stakeholders, but student voice is one that we really should value and learn from. All right. The next item is the announcement of meeting dates. The school board's next meeting is this evening at 6:30 is our nightly monthly meeting. But then after this evening's meeting, the next work session is scheduled on Thursday, April 20th, 2023, at 1:00 p.m., followed by a monthly meeting at 6:30 p.m. Please note that the meeting times may be adjusted as needed. This meeting is adjourned.